Unmuted.
This is the City of Socorro City Council, so it's set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone, please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated, and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La junta del concilio de la ciudad de Socorro está por comenzar. Caballeros, favor de quitarse las cachuchas sombreros y todos favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. A quien no siga estas reglas, se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Here.
Alejandro García.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz Jr.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent. Mayor, we have a quorum?
Thank you. Item number four, public comment.
We have two speakers, mayor. Our first speaker is Javier Paz.
Hello, mayor, council, admin, and residents. I'm here to report on a few items from the county. My name is Javier Paz, I'm senior policy advisor for Commissioner Eliana Jorgi. First thing is, I think everyone, I put it on everyone's seats, the first one is the invitation, November 1st, to the Coliseum in a celebration of veterans. We plan to, the county plans to declare our county as the veterans' capital of the U.S. We're going to be putting in for that application, and we hope to celebrate veterans every year, and we invite the community here, anyone that you know that is a veteran, to this celebration, November 1st. Other items that, there are lots of copies that I left in the back, but I don't have much time, but just to brief on a couple of them. They're all from the, they're all grant projects, start from the federal government to the state. And Ayuda, who is our local nonprofit, is administering, administering these projects. So if anyone that likes any of these projects that we talk, that I talk about, please contact them. One of them is about mortgage assistance. So if you know of anyone who's behind on mortgages, please grab a flyer on the back. One is about rental assistance, if you're behind on your rent, utilities, there's one on that as well. There's also one from HUD on disabilities, so for people who are disabled who need accommodations made in the home, like in the restrooms and kitchens and stuff like that, there's grants, there's money available for that. Senior citizens also, that need a lot of adjustments to their homes, and there's money for that as well, for senior citizens. And the last one is veterans, once again. So if you feel like any of your, one of those categories, and need assistance, please grab a flyer, and Ayuda could walk you through the whole process for those grants. Or you could always contact our office, Commissioner Jorgi's office, at 915-546-2144, or Commissioner #3@apcounty.com, and we can gladly get you started on any one of these programs. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a question, Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Paz, on one of the flyers that you provided here, we're seeing the qualifying area codes, does Socorro not qualify for this program since our zip code's not identified?
Under what, for the rental assistance, it should be, I'm not sure why they didn't put that one on there.
Can I just take off the eight and put a seven there?
No, no, I guess they didn't put all of them, but I guess this is mainly where they're mainly serving, but it should qualify.
Socorro does qualify, okay.
Yeah, yeah, as far as I know. So, why they didn't put it, I don't know.
All the flyers provided here tonight, our residents do qualify for these programs?
Right, they're mainly made for the county. So for example, the rental assistance program actually isn't for the city any longer because those funds run out. So we do have the county assistance though, for the rest of the county, all the way that they're new.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julio Monárrez. Would you like to come forward? Mr. Monárrez, you have three minutes.
Well, I didn't know I was allowed to speak, but thank you for allowing me to be here to speak. I applied for a rezoning, and I would very much appreciate a favorable decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, those are all our speakers. Moving on to presentations.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to postpone item number five until the next regular council meeting.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro García.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Item number six, presentation by Elizabeth O'Hara with the Texas Gas Company, will be presenting how to read the Texas Gas Bill and assistance programs available.
It's so nice to see you all again, we'll have to start doing this like every other week now. Thank you all very much for having me here. The reason that I wanted to do this, and my coworker Victor Ethel will be joining me as well to answer any questions, is that we believe that your constituents are soon to be reaching out to you. As we start to get colder weather, people are turning on their heat, and we're dealing with a high cost of gas to begin with. So not only do we have a price of a commodity that is very high, but usage is going to make local bills very high. So I wanted to go ahead and have the opportunity to equip you on council with information on why that's happening, so that if you get those questions, you're able to answer them. And then when we are done, and I have a PowerPoint with regards to the bill, I want to talk with you a little bit about our average bill calculation, because I would like for you all to encourage your constituents to sign up for that as well. Can we go ahead and go to the PowerPoint, please? You can go to the, there you go. So this is what a bill looks like, and I will tell you that in working with our corporate communication team, I gave them an El Paso bill, and had them, but this is based on a three-bedroom, two-bath kind of average house. I asked a friend of mine, hey, can I have your bill? And then we, you know, just took their names off, but this is a real bill. And so you'll notice that when you're looking at your own bill, there are going to be a number of charges on there. The rate code, the cost of gas, I'm going to break down each one of those for you. Next slide, please. Found at the top is going to be where you, what kind of service it is that you're getting. Are you a resident, are you a business, where do you live? You can find that there. And some of your rates are adjusted based on whether you are a commercial user or whether you are a private homeowner. So that's why I wanted to go ahead and call that out to you. Next slide, please. This is a fixed amount that you're going to see, and that's your customer charge. We are regulated by the Railroad Commission. I know that sounds crazy, but that is who oversees us. El Paso Electric has the Public Utility Commission of Texas, or PUCT, and El Paso Water is overseen by the Public Service Board. Our regulators will periodically adjust this customer charge, and it is the same for all customers, it is not based on usage. So you're going to see the same number on your bill here. And this is going to cover some of our costs, like meter reading and equipment maintenance. Next slide, please. This one is also determined by our regulator, and this is the delivery charge. This is what it is for us to bring gas to your home or business. Now I'm going to stop here for just a second, because I'm going to give a very simplistic description of how gas comes into our area. And it's mainly three things. You will have your producers, these are the groups that are in Colorado, can be in West Texas, these are the folks that are actually going down into the gas pockets in the earth and bringing the gas back up to surface. So those are our producers. That is not Texas gas. Once the producers have the commodity, it then goes over to a supplier. And the supplier is the one who starts working with the individual local distribution companies to say, how much gas are you going to need? There is a fee associated with that, and that is the business transaction from supplier to the local distribution company. Texas Gas Service is the LDC here for El Paso County. So we receive it at what is called the city gate, and from that point into the city, we are responsible for the pipeline integrity and maintenance, making sure that all safety codes are met, making sure that you're able to get gas exactly when it is that you want it. So we're the third link in that chain, if you will. So this delivery charge is from us, what it costs us to deliver the natural gas to the community. Next slide, please. This is going to be the bane of our existence, and potentially for you all, for a couple of months. We have seen that the price of gas has been up for a long time. This is not a marked-up cost. This is what the supplier, that second link in the chain, passes on down to the local distribution companies. This is not something that the LDC makes money on, this is a pass-through cost. So what happened is, soon after winter storm Yuri, which was about a year and a half ago, you started to see natural gas costs going up. They've never really gone down. And so as a result, your electric bill has been higher, because they use natural gas to help produce electricity. And you've seen that when it came to gasoline, which is a different kind of gas. And so you've seen, this is part of the reason why a number of our products have gone up, it was the cost of gas that's getting directly passed on to consumers. This has gone up about three to four times in about a year. And this, along with usage, is what is going to make our bills, this probably through the winter, high. Next, next slide, please. Weather normalization, sometimes you will see this on your bill, sometimes you won't. And this is to help reduce the impact of weather extremes. And so we are constantly looking and maintaining the integrity of our line, and you'll see there, I think on this particular bill, and I don't have my glasses on, so it's either 88 or 89 cents. It's usually a fairly low amount, but you're not going to see a number of fluctuations there. Next slide, please. Pipeline integrity, this is making sure that our pipeline is safe. I will tell you, some of you know that I had a media background for a very, very long time, so a lot of what I tell our company comes from that experience. I think they've done a really lousy job of telling people all of the cool things and important things that they have done to make sure that our pipeline is safe. One of them is starting that, since 2014, we started getting rid of vintage pipeline all over. So it used to be the kind of pipe that had been put back in the ground back in probably the 1930s, the 1940s. And as the earth shifts, as we start to have more growth, sometimes those lines would have integrity issues. As we are in the process of getting rid of all of that vintage pipeline, we've also seen the emissions come down as a result. So that's been really good for the environment. That's what this charge is. Next slide, please. This economic development rate is paid to the city of El Paso and is part of our franchise agreement with them. So as you all know, we do franchise agreements about every four to five years, and we are in the process right now of working with the city of El Paso, as well as with you all, on our rate case. This is designated by the franchise and is used to help attract new business and make sure that we are increasing our employment opportunities. I will tell you that every engineer, just about every engineer working for Texas Gas, and certainly a number that are working in our sister states, Kansas and Oklahoma, are being directly recruited out of UTEP. It is seen as the premier place to pick up our engineers. Our entire engineering department for Texas Gas here in El Paso is from UTEP, and we are continuing to work with the Community College and other local workforce development groups, so that we can continue to hire local. Next, please. This is a winter storm Yuri charge. This is new to your bill, and it hit, if I remember correctly, in March or April of this year. So you all will remember the storm that happened in February of 2021, and that wrecked most of Texas. But in El Paso, we were able to keep our electricity and our natural gas going. So a lot of people will question, and I want to prepare you for this, if we didn't lose power and we didn't lose gas, why do we have to pay for this winter storm Yuri charge? At that time, in the days, maybe two weeks, maybe it was 10 days, before the storm hit, we could see that there was something coming. We knew that this was going to be a bad storm. What we did not know is that it was going to hit the entire territory for Texas Gas, all three of our states and the wide swath of Texas. So although we did not lose natural gas in El Paso, we had increased use, at the same time that the rest of the state also had increased use. And you'll remember that I told you, the suppliers take the commodity from the producers. During that time, we can either get into the amount of gas that we store, we hedge cost, you all are aware of that and have seen those legal documents, where we can say, a year out, this is about how much gas we think the city of Socorro will use, the city of El Paso. We went through that amount during that time of winter storm Yuri, and we had to buy natural gas on the spot market, which was incredibly expensive. And so even though we did not lose gas, we had increased use, and we were charged a very high rate. You'll remember that I said, the supplier's rate to us is a pass-through, and that's what you're seeing here. So once that winter storm was done, we went into something called securitization. The Railroad Commission recognizes that the natural gas suppliers in Texas had no choice but to buy gas at that high rate. And if we were to come back to our customers to say, okay, this is how much we spent in that week in February, your bills would be astronomical. So what they do is, they allow us to do securitization and break that up. In our case, it's about 37, looks like it's about $37, $38 on this bill, and we're going to have that for three years. The rest of the state is going to have a higher amount, and they're going to have it for five to seven years. That's in the process right now of being negotiated, and we think those bills will be coming out probably at the end of December, early part of January. So while this is certainly not pleasant, we recognize that this is going to be done in about three years, and this will fall off of the bill. Next, please. This is a reimbursement for taxes and fees, this is also tied to our city franchise fees and our gross receipts, and it's money that we end up giving back to the city of El Paso. Next, please. So again, depending on where you live, since you all are city of Socorro, your rates may be a little bit different than city of El Paso. Again, it's all kind of dependent on what we have negotiated with the different territories. So if you need to go down and break down what those look like, this is our website, you would go and look for the area that says rates and tariffs, and you would be able to find the breakdown for that. Is there another slide? Ah, so I did put it on a PowerPoint. So we are very much wanting customers to sign up for the average bill calculation, or ABC plan. And the reason for that is this, under normal circumstances, without the securitization, without the high cost of gas, your gas bill would probably be the lowest of your three utility bills. However, because of the high cost of gas, because of the increased usage that we're going to see in the fall and winter, what we don't want is for people to go from having a $50 gas bill to a $150 gas bill in the course of a couple of weeks. And the more you use, the higher your bill goes. And so what we are asking people to do is to go to our website or call our 800 number and give your information, so that you can be put on this ABC plan. It levels out what you will be paying, so you can always expect to have the same bill every month. We don't want there to be sticker shock. This can be done for businesses as well. So I want, if you can, to please pass this along to your constituents, we think this is going to be very important. The gentleman that spoke a few moments ago also talked a little bit about utility assistance. We continue to want to work with our customers. As a result of COVID, we saw a number of them all over El Paso County who, through no fault of their own, had a hard time paying their utility bill. A lot of that federal assistance came through, as you know, through the county, through the city of El Paso, and we continue to work with Project Amistad and Project Bravo, as well as the county of El Paso and the United Way, so that if we have customers who need help, they call these agencies, they are vetted through those agencies, so if they are a veteran, they may pull from a certain pot of money. If they are under a certain wage, they can pull from a different set of monies. That person who's helping them from the agency has access to our customer service portal and can apply the nominations, the monies, to that account. Now, it used to be under utility assistance that, you know, we might be able to help somebody out, and eventually they were asked to pay that back. COVID changed that. So if they need help, they get this help, and that's it. We just want our customers to be whole, and we want them to be able to have all of the necessities that they need, water, gas, electric, in our case, we're the gas provider, we want them to be able to have what it is that they're expecting. And so I have left copies of the average bill calculation presentation in the back, it's available in both English and Spanish, and I'm happy to take any questions for you, from you, at this time. You guys are letting me off the hook? Wow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item number seven, presentation by city manager regarding August 2022 and September 2022 monthly report.
Good evening, we're in council, I will be providing you the monthly highlights for August and September for the departments. Municipal Courts Department in August collected $54,223. In September, they collected $53,073. The total collected for fiscal year 2022 was $831,671 with 95 cents. Our HR department did not have civil service in August due to lack of quorum. In September, they had the meeting that was held in September 12. We did have three separations in the month of August, and two separations in the month of September, from Police Department and our Public Works Department. August, we had new hires, one communication dispatcher, Yadira Ortiz García. In September, we had four new hires, three labors, and our field operations supervisor, Julio Dominguez. Our Parks and Public Works Department in August picked up water throughout the city due to the rains, created sandbags, sandbag preparation, and weed cleanup. In September, they assisted with a harvest festival, installation of solar lights at Bulldog Park, and the clean, the 24 pond areas were cleaned throughout the city. And they continue to maintain, mow and groom all city parks and ponding areas. Our Police Department received 2,171 calls for service in August, and in September, 1,525. They made 55 arrests in August, 42 in September. Officers continued to attend training to keep them in compliance with certification of TICLO requirements. Our City Clerk Department prepared agendas and minutes for meetings scheduled August 4th, 18th, September 1st, and 15th. In August, she received 45 open records, responded to 51. In September, she received 50, responded to 12. Planning and zoning department collected for the month of August, $228,542 with 48 cents. For September, they collected $256,722 with 18 cents. August, they issued 338 permits. In September, 256 permits. They issued 37 registrations in August, and 79 in September. They issued five applications in August, seven in September, and 111 letters in August, 50 letters in September. Our Code and Animal Control issued 112 notice of violations. 228 cases were cleared, and 70 citations were issued. In August, in September, there was 170 notice of violations, 109 cases were cleared, 22 citations were issued. Our Animal Control received 208 calls for service, impounded 20 animals, and issued 11 citations. Our Recreations Department on August 13 hosted the UMC Car Seat Event. August 24th, made their presentation on the application for the 5310 grant. On August 31st, they took the seniors to the senior citizen expo, they had no HLC due to lack of quorum. In September, they hosted the first Socorro Sunday, which was on September 4th. September 9th and 10th, they had the Bino National History Event. On September 16, they attended the Rio Grande Council of Governments meeting, the city Socorro was awarded the Organization of the Year Award, and they also received a vote to sit at the Board of Directors at that meeting. September 17, we had our first TEDx event, September 24th Harvest Festival with Noche de Juarez, and there was also no HLC meeting due to lack of quorum. They also kept up with all social media platforms, media inquiries, and press releases. Our IT Department in August completed the cabling project for the new dispatch building, replaced the security camera systems at the police patrol building, attended a police body camera training. In September, they completed the destruction of end-of-life equipment, completed the installation of new port at the Art and Riobos Building, also installed the NAS storage unit for evidence office, and troubleshooted all IT-related issues throughout the city. In August, Grants Administration submitted grant reimbursement requests totaling $101,628 in grant funding for various programs, including the West Texas HIDA program, COPS hiring program, and COPS Crisis Interventions Team. The CARES Act received final CARES Act reimbursement in the amount of $415,366 from the El Paso County. In total, the Grant Office successfully administered $1,479,000 in CARES Act expenditures and reimbursements. ARPA provided in service for city departments on recently adopted ARPA policy and ARPA projects, approval process on August 17. ARPA provided in-service for city departments on recently adopted ARPA policy and ARPA projects approval process on August 12. Nonprofit completed onboarding of new executive director for the CSI nonprofit on July 25. For economic recovery, they coordinated small business support meetings at the Dusty Tap and at the El Cruzero, and offered franchise opportunities workshops on August 31. Transportation continued to administer all support invoices and reimbursement from Techstat for the Bovi-Rio Vista Bridge, Passmore Shared Use Path, Arteria One, and Nuevo Way Go Tanks Road. Those are the highlights for our departments for both of those months. I don't know if you all have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Hi.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Moving on to regular agenda, public hearing and ordinances. Item number fifteen, public hearing of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of a portion of Track 15, AKA P-1 out of Track 15, Lake Clark Survey number 298, from unclassified to C2 general commercial, and to approve a conditional use permit to allow for a trucking company. It is 6:32 PM. Hearing is now open. As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:33 PM. Item number sixteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of a portion of Track 15, AKA P-1 out of Track 15, Lake Clark Survey number 298, from unclassified to C2 general commercial, and to approve a conditional use permit to allow for a trucking company.
Mayor and council, good evening. Carlos Gaynor with Planning and Zoning Department. This is, uh, two things on this item before I go into the presentation. One, the property will sound or look familiar to you because we have processed the subdivision plat about a month ago. And so this is a parcel of land that is on the sort of, close to the city limits of Socorro in those areas that have unclassified zoning districts. So as you know, there's several parcels that are unclassified. For whatever reason, many, many years ago, they weren't given a zoning district. And so now, as property owners are starting to develop their projects, they need a zoning district and they need a subdivision plat. So we've taken care of the subdivision plat, and then tonight you are looking at a rezoning request. First slide, please, of the presentation. Next slide. So as part of the background of this project, of this application, again, it is the approval of a rezoning from unclassified to commercial to general commercial. And then, as you know, anything that has to do with cars, auto parts, tire shops, parking lots, truck stops, requires a conditional use permit. So that's why you have those two items, rezoning and conditional use permit. The size of the parcel is about 2.08 acres. It is on, directly on I-10 Gateway Boulevard West. The future land use map for the city's comprehensive plan has this as light industrial. It is currently vacant, and the proposed land use is a trucking company. Again, the request is to rezon from C2 and a conditional use permit to allow the trucking company. Both the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval. The next slide shows the location, so again, off of I-10. Here's the zoning map, so you'll see that it is unclassified. And again, many of those parcels in that area are either M1, M2. You start to see some ICMUD, you start to see some C2. So in terms of the compatibility of the zoning district, it makes sense for it to be C2. And then here's some property pictures. The next slide shows you the aerial image. And the public notice as required by state law. We did notify the residents within 200 feet of this parcel, and we have received no public input. Here's just a picture of the final plat that you all approved about four weeks ago. And then again, this is, the plat's been taken care of. Just wanted to show you that for reference. And then today, the request is for the rezoning. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Hi.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Item number seventeen, public hearing of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of lots 1 and 2, Block 4, Country Green Subdivision located at 791 Soya Drive, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential to allow two duplexes. It is 6:36 PM. Public hearing is now open. As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:37 PM. Item number eighteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to allow the rezoning of lots 1 and 2, Block 4, Country Green Subdivision located at 791 Soya Drive, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential to allow two duplex units.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor and council, once again, Carlos Gaynor with Planning and Zoning. So this is another rezoning, Planning and Zoning Department. This is another rezoning request. This is for a duplex. So the, can we pull up the presentation, please? So this is located on 791 Soya Street. Again, as part of the background, and which is part of your backup, part of the agenda backup, the zoning currently is R1. So as you know, the R1 really only allows a single-family house. So anytime that folks want to do a duplex, or a triplex, or even apartments, they have to rezon to R2. In this case, the applicant is requesting the R2 to allow for two duplexes, two duplexes, which would equate to four units total. Again, the address is 791 Soya. Actually, let me go back to the size of the lot, which I think is important to outline. So this lot is 16,634 square feet. The minimum lot size when we are requiring onsite ponding is 10,000 square feet. And so had the applicant subdivided the lot into 10,000, it would have left a parcel of land that's almost sort of like a wasted piece of land at about 6,000 square feet. So they're combining the parcels, right? So you now have a parcel of 16,000 square feet, which is higher than the 10,000. And then again, the request is to allow for four units within a, four units within a 16,000 square foot lot. So from our perspective, in terms of the density, that makes sense. The future land use map has this as residential. The proposed land use, again, is resident, continues to be residential. And then the request is to rezon from R1 to R2 to allow for two duplexes for a total of four units. And again, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission are both recommending approval. Here's the location map. So again, it's on the corner lot of Soya and Lydia. Here's, you see the zoning map, so it shows the parcels, the parcel of land, the two parcels on zone, currently zone R1. And then I wanted to show you the larger extent of the zoning map. The next slide, please. So again, when we look at the zoning request, right, we look, one, is it still compatible within the neighborhood? So number one, it continues to be residential, so the answer to that question is yes. And then number two, are there other similar zoning districts within the general vicinity? And so when we zoom out a little bit from this neighborhood, we see that there are other similar R2s. There's even R3s. The city no longer allows R3s, but R3s are even smaller lots. And so again, when you're looking at just injecting residential uses within a neighborhood that is currently residential from our perspective, it makes sense for the proposed use. And then here are some property pictures. So there's currently a parcel, there's currently a house that is in the middle of the lot line. And so the applicant will be demolishing this structure and rebuilding the new structures. Here's the aerial photograph. And then here's the public notice, as is required by state law, and we have received no public input. And then the site plan shows, next slide. The site plan shows, the image to my right shows the two duplexes. The image to the left shows the square footage. And then you see at the bottom left the elevations of the building. And so again, they are accounting for ponding, they are accounting for landscaping, they are accounting for parking, in addition to the four structures that they will be building on this lot. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, the summary of the request is straight-up rezoning from R1 to R2. They meet all the other conditional standards. They don't need variances for the setbacks. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Hi.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Grants Department, item number nineteen, discussion and action to award RFP 22-11 for the provision of small business economic recovery grants to El Paso Collaborative for Community and Economic Development, EPC, in the amount of 25,000.
Motion to approve, second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Alejandro Lade, City Development Director. We are here requesting your approval to award RFP 22-11 for the provision of small business economic recovery grants to El Paso Collaborative. The city did issue this RFP in September 2022. We did receive two proposals that were viable by the seminal deadline. A review scoring committee did review the submitted proposals, scored the proposals, and we are requesting your approval for the highest scoring bidder, which is El Paso Collaborative.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Hi.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Planning and Zoning Department, item number 20, discussion and action to approve Resolution 718, approving a preliminary and final plat for Capistro Subdivision, being all of Block 13, Track 8B, Socorro Grand, Socorro, Texas.
Mayor and council, once again, Carlos Gaynor with Planning and Zoning Department. This is now, we shift from rezoning to subdivision plats. This is a request to approve both the preliminary and final plats. And the reason that we're able to do that, as you know, is because there are no public improvements. This is essentially a lot split of a large parcel of land into four different parcels. So again, as part of the background, the zoning is R1 Single Family Residential. It is a large, substantially large parcel of land, about 13.5 acres. It is located on Bovi Road in Alameda. And the future land use map has this as commercial. Currently vacant, the proposed land use is residential, as is the zoning district. And then the request is to approve a preliminary plats for subdivision that includes four residential lots. And then I want to, I do want to point out that as part of the plat, we are requesting, and the applicant is providing, an additional 15 feet of land that will be dedicated to the city. So whenever in the future we expand Bovi Road, we will have the land available to us. And that is part of the subdivision plat. And then staff and the P&amp;Z is recommending approval. Here's the location, so again, off of, near Alameda. And here's the pictures of the property. Here's the aerial image. So again, it's a large piece of land, it's about 13 acres. And then here's the preliminary plat, and the preliminary plat essentially just shows elevations. It's a pretty flat piece of land. It shows the easements. And then the final plat, which is what it actually gets recorded, shows the lot lines. And then, next slide, please. So this is the final plat. And then, I know you can't read it, but it does show the easement, or the, I'm sorry, not the easement, the dedication of land to the city for the additional 15 feet for future right-of-way. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Hi.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Item number 21, discussion and action to approve Resolution 719, approving a preliminary plat for East Wind Industrial Subdivision, being Robert E. Nick's Survey Number 302, 303, and 304, Socorro, Texas.
Mayor and council, last item on my agenda. Carlos Gaynor, once again. So this is, again, this is a piece of property that has, will sound very familiar to you over the past two months. We have been managing several of applications, beginning with the rezoning from, I believe it was unclassified to ICMUD. So that was already done, again, within the past couple of months. This is now moving into the subdivision phase, and so this is the first plat that you'll see, which is a preliminary plat. And then, again, part of the information that I'll provide to you will sound familiar. It's 185 acres on I-10. Again, was rezoned to ICMUD a few months back. The land use currently is vacant, and the proposed land use is warehousing logistics center. And the request is to approve the preliminary plat. The plat shows two commercial lots, and the only thing that will be dedicated to the city is a major street that will be, that will bifurcate the two, the parcel into two. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval. Here is the location map. Here's the zoning map. Here's the pictures of the property. It's vacant land. Here's the aerial image. And then this is the preliminary plat. And again, the preliminary plat is essentially what it, what it sounds like, where it's the preliminary plat. It shows the initial lot lines, it shows the elevations. We will be processing the final plat in two weeks. And with that, I'll bring you more information when that, when that comes forth. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Hi.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Thank you.
City Manager, item number 22, discussion and action to approve mayor and any other council member to travel for TML Regional Meeting 4 in Alpine, Texas on October 28, 2022.
Motion to approve, second.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is requesting approval for mayor and any other council members that are interested in attending the TML, which is on October 28. I just wanted to note that we do have our Fright Farm event, that it will be that same day. If you do decide, we need to, you know, know by today, because the deadline is tomorrow.
It has to be tonight, actually. Ms. Norma was letting me know. So if you'd like to, just let me know, so I can send her an email. Anybody want to go on Friday? Next Friday?
I guess the motion is just to approve, and whoever wants to can notify.
We just need to know by tomorrow morning.
Right.
Like to make a motion to approve.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Hi.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Item number 23, discussion and action on municipal judge appointment and authorize city manager on her designate to execute contract.
Motion to approve, second.
Good evening, mayor and council. The municipal judge contract position was published on September 6 and closed October 7. The interview panel consisted of court coordinator Isela Gonzalez, chief of police David Burden, and city manager, myself, Adriana Rodarte. There were four candidates eligible to participate in the interview schedule Wednesday, October 5. All candidates appeared for the interview. The following are the ranking scores. Ms. Melissa Warwick scored 78 points. David Nevada scored 83 points. Elia Garcia scored 68 points. Elia Garcia scored 68 points. Christina Montez scored 53 points. Staff is recommending candidate David Nevares for the contract position for municipal judge. Mr. Nevares is an outstanding candidate who fulfills all the requirements and experience that the City of Socorro Municipal Court is searching for.
May I?
Mr. Nevares?
If I may, no relation to me.
Yes.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Yes.
To approve, staff's recommendation?
Staff's recommendation, yes.
They need to put that as a motion?
Let me, um, please. My motion, I rescind my motion to be motion to approve with staff's recommendation.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Item number 24, discussion and action to approve Camacho Hernandez Work Order 1 and 2 for Engineering Services and authorize City Manager or designee to execute work order.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ciudad Socorro Council selected three engineer firms for general engineering services. We have issued different assignments to all three firms. What you'll be seeing the next couple of meetings are the approval for the work authorizations to be able to start working. Assignments were given to different firms starting on September 21. When issuing assignments, we did take into account, in consideration, the experience from staff, availability, and of course, pricing. All three will have general engineering work authorization. The following work authorizations are the first two that we have received. As we are receiving them, we will be bringing them to council for approval. Please note, most of these projects are funded through different funding sources. Approval for work order number 1 consists of engineer will perform program management and engineering service generally described as in accordance with a project description attached to, made part of the work authorization. The responsibilities of the city and the engineer are further detailed in Exhibits A and B and C, which are attached here too, and made part of the work authorization. Consists of attending and providing the city with a design and a plan to present to several funding sources for major projects. This work authorization cannot exceed $845,885. We have work authorization number 2 that consists of engineering services generally described as preliminary engineering services for development of a design, schematic, environmental documents, studies, and support of the schematic work, public involvement permit, procurement, data collection, analysis, mitigation, and remediation, monitoring drainage, conceptual traffic control, traffic projections, traffic engineering and operations including traffic simulations, and 3D modeling surveying and mapping, subsurface utility engineering, utility coordination, and PS and E services for the Nuevo Wicco Tanker Project in the Ciudad Socorro. This work authorization should not exceed $2.5 million. Almost $2.6.
No question.
You have a question? Mr. Cruz?
On the contract here, the city is obligated to manage the work authorizations. Who, who from our staff's going to be handling that?
That would be our Grants Department.
That's going to be the Grants Department?
Correct. So it'll be, so it'll be a combination of Mr. Gaynor's team and our Grants Department.
The reason why I ask is because I know in the past, with projects this size, we're telling you guys, we need you to do this, 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 and this. But this takes priority when it's a project in the millions, and we cannot fall behind schedule. So for whatever reason, if there happens to be a change order, for whatever reason, because we don't live in a perfect world, I know that there's some numbers here that we're not to exceed. But I'll ask you, and then I'll also, I'll also request that Mr. Gaynor also chime in. Do you all feel the need to authorize either one of you or a designee to sign off on anything so that we don't have to wait till our next council meeting to authorize a change order in X amount of dollars for whatever reason?
Correct. I think it's best practice is that, I mean, that the council does go through the work authorizations. That's why they're important, that they come in, so you can review them and approve them. But I do feel that we should have some type of flexibility to be able to make these type of decisions when it's on the, right, if it's a potential loss of funds.
And the reason why I bring this up is, again, it's a contract between two entities, the Ciudad Socorro, Camacho Hernandez. We're held to a standard, we also hold them to a standard. If they're late, there's going to be some deductions. If we're late, there'll also be some deductions on our end, or increase in dollar amounts. That's, that's the only reason why I bring it up.
Correct. And that's like with any contract that you have here. But I think that lessons learned. We now have a checklist, and we now know exactly what we're looking for. Even if I were to no longer be here, Mr. Gaynor, no longer here, I mean, there's a checklist that we are making sure that we're crossing all of our Ts in order to make sure that that gets processed.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Ms. Rodarte, I bumped into Exhibit, Exhibit D fee schedule.
Yes.
Air travel, lodging, meals, overnight state required, rental car, parking, overnight expenses, and these are stuff that we're paying for?
Correct. So it's part of the contract. So some of the, their team are out of town, or they have to go out of town. And this is just the standard. All three firms are going to be asking for the same unit price. But remember, these, these projects are funded by state and federal funds, and those are qualifying items that they're able to charge to. We just have to make sure that we check receipts, mileage, who's attending, was that day, we did, we do have, did we do have a meeting, all of that. I mean, a text looks at all of that.
Does it mean they're, they're going to, to charge, but if, if it does? It's in there. This, this is what their, their menu looks like, right? And these are all the prices?
And they have to list some. If not, then they're not approved through the contract.
Yeah.
They're not refundable.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, okay. I mean, that's just $144,000 worth. Okay?
And the, and these work authorizations can't exceed the amount, doesn't mean we're going to use it all, right? It's just, we're monitoring as we go. But we need this amount, because that's the money that we have available from the state and federal. The objective, though, is with these engineering firms, is that we go out and try to get more funding in order to cover the whole project. And they'll be assisting us with that.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Mayor and Council, item number 25, discussion and action to approve the appointment of Melissa Laguna to the Ethics Commission, Pl. 7.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Item number 26, swearing in of newly appointed commissioner.
Ms. Laguna, would you step forward, please? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Melissa Laguna, do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm? Or affirm?
However.
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office
The duties of the office
of the Ethics Commission
Of the Ethics Commission
of the City of Socorro, Texas
Of the City of Socorro, Texas
and will to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution
And defend the Constitution
and the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States
and of this state.
And of this state.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Melissa Laguna
I, Melissa Laguna
do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will, that I have not
That I have not
not?
That I have not
directly or indirectly paid
Directly or indirectly paid
offered
Offered
promised to pay
Promised to pay
contributed
Contributed
or promised to contribute
Or promised to contribute
any money
Any money
or thing of value
Or thing of value
or promised any public
Or promised any
public
Public
or employment
Or employment
as reward
As a reward
to secure my appointment
To secure my appointment
or confirmation thereof
Or confirmation thereof
Thank you very much, Ms. Laguna. Congratulations. Would you like to take a picture with Ms. Garcia? Or do you guys want to come forward?
Yes.
Rio Grande Council of Governments Board of Directors.
Motion to approve?
Second. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item that you have in front of you here today is to appoint Mayor Ivy Avalos to the Board of Directors for the Rio Grande Council of Governments. We're the second-largest municipality in the entire county of El Paso, yet we held no seat, and we had, we had no say at that table. I reached out in February of this year. They, they had to wait until the month of October in order to make these changes, to allow for it. The, the board came together, they voted on the changes, their structure changed, and now it allows for one more seat to be added at the table. That seat now belongs to the Ciudad Socorro. The only way that we can act on that table is if we have a representative. The representative also has to be an elected official. I feel that it's necessary that we, we place our mayor, Ivy Avalos, at, at the seat, which is why I'd like to make the motion tonight to approve this item, if she wishes.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the thought, and I, I, I accept.
You had no other choice. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Motion to delete 28, 29, and 30?
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Meeting adjourns at 7:04 PM.
Good night.
Good night.